Good morning and welcome to the Mason County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for September 20th. We're sure glad you're all here. I'd like to ask, um, who did I say? Who did I ask? I can't remember. Ms. McGee, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
Here.
Commissioner District Two, Tim Sheldon is absent. Commissioner District Three, Terry Jeffrey.
Here. Correspondence and organizational business. Please report the correspondence received by the commission.
The Liquor and Cannabis Board sent a special occasion application for Sunrise Equine Rescue, and Stephen Rose applied for the Historical Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Next, we have item 4.2. This is the news release from the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission, Michael McSimms. There he is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Mason County Commissioners are seeking applicants to fill three open positions on the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission. The major responsibility of the Historic Preservation Commission is to identify and actively encourage the conservation of Mason County's historic resources by initiating and maintaining a register of historic places and reviewing proposed changes to registry properties. They also work to raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources and serve as Mason County's primary resource in matters of history, historic planning, and preservation. Commission members serve three-year terms and meet monthly during business hours at the county offices in Shelton. All three positions will expire in November 2016. Applicants must be residents of Mason County. These terms will expire in November of 2019. Interested persons are encouraged to apply for this commission by completing an advisory board form that can be downloaded at the Mason County website, or by calling the Commissioner's office at (427) 9670-419, or in the bailiff area (275) 4467-419. These positions are open until filled. Completed applications should be submitted to the Commissioner's office at (411) North Fifth Street in Shelton. If there are questions about this commission, please contact Michael McSimms at (427) 9670-571.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our quarterly report from Cheryl Hayward, who is the Director of our Timberland Regional Library System. Welcome, Cheryl.
Good morning. Before I get started, I'd like to have Jenny introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Jenny Grenfell. I'm the manager of the North Mason Timberland Library and Bail Fair.
Jenny, welcome.
Welcome. So you have a board, a board packet, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm at my own board meeting. You have a packet of information, and I want to highlight a couple of events that are coming up. This is our 12th year putting together a community reading program called Timberland Reads Together, and you have the booklet here that's now available in all of our 27 libraries. The book is "The Boys in the Boat: Nine Americans and Their Epic Quest for Gold at the 1936 Berlin Olympics." Daniel James Brown will be speaking. The author will be speaking at the Washington Center for the Performing Arts in downtown Olympia Tuesday, October 4th at 7:00 p.m. This is a free event, first come, first served, no tickets. There are 70 other programs around this book throughout the 27 libraries, and so all that is mentioned in here. Joe Rantz, who's one of the main people in the book, the main rower, his daughter will be speaking at three different libraries about her father. So, um, so that's what's going on with Timberland Reads Together. Then, there's a poster also in your folder about a contest that's coming up, and that started September 15 through to October 31st, and this is an art contest. We are asking children ages five through 18, so five through 11, and then 12 through 18 to design a library card. There will be winners selected at each of our libraries, and then those winners will be, there'll be a winner of winners, and then the winner of winners will be, uh, will be using those images for our library cards going into next year and the year after, where we will be celebrating 50 years in our communities from 1968 to 2018. So we are encouraging kids and teens to either go to our website or come into their libraries to get a form to create that image. And then I wanted to also share with you that we have entered into a very unique partnership with the Olympia School District. They approached us early la, or late last year, and they wanted to work out an agreement where their 9,500 K through 12 students would get, receive electronic library cards from us, which would help them access our online resources and over 80 databases to help them with homework help and so on. So, effective this Thursday, in 10 minutes, we will be able to issue 9,500 cards, and we hope to then start moving forward with other agreements, similar agreements with the other 45 school districts we have in our five counties. So this is very, very exciting. And then, I wanted to also share with you that in the first month, first six months of this year, in Mason County, there has been a 15% increase in library cards issued. So 1,678 cards were issued in the first six months of this year compared to 1,455 issued in the first six months of last year. And if you ask me why, it's most probably because of people like Jenny and the staff at the three libraries doing phenomenal outreach to the schools, to businesses, to community organizations, and then doing in-reach in terms of the types of programs that they offer for all ages. And I wanted to leave you with a service story that has been highly impactful, particularly in Shelton. So earlier this year in May, Shelton staff had a program titled Addiction Awareness as part of their Come Together Mason County series addressing difficult issues affecting the community. They had a moderator with experience in the field of substance abuse treatment, a panel with two recovering addicts, a counselor, the police chief, and author by Skype, who wrote about, a book about her son's addiction. The meeting room was at capacity, and many, many audience members shared their experiences, as well as having a spirited dialogue about what solutions might work on the individual and societal level. Afterwards, Shelton's mayor, who was in attendance, proclaimed it the best program I've ever attended. The police chief recruited one of the recovering addicts for speaking engagements at other future endeavors. An audience member who runs an insurance agency pledged money to some of the social service agencies who had representatives in the audience. Considering the destructive effect drug addiction has on the local level and beyond, this program was very timely and represented the part of our mission that has to do with engaging community issues and being a part of the solution, and it represented that mission very well. So we would like to thank Adult Services Librarian Dee Depauw, because she was the brains behind this event, as well as the heart and the soul of bringing this tremendous program to the Shelton community.
Thank you, Cheryl. Congratulations.
Congratulations to your staff.
Yeah, to all of you.
Yes.
This is the most dynamic library system I've ever.
We're trying to get it.
You know, the constant drumbeat that the libraries are dead, or libraries are no longer needed, is absolutely false in this community, at the very least, and I think it's a lot, has so much to do with the energy and the creativity of your staff, and thank you for your service.
That's a lifeline up in our place. Everybody knows that.
Yes.
It truly is for a lot of people, because.
It is.
Up there, we have, we have a lot of issues, homelessness stuff. I got people don't realize what a lifeline, a library can be. I didn't. I've learned over the years.
And so Jenny was just invited last week to the Mission Creek Correctional Facility for Women, and last week she was invited to take, to table the event. Last week, she was invited back to give five breakout sessions, right?
Good.
So five sessions, 30 people each, 150 women, to explain to them what the library can do and help them in terms of their education, their early literacy for their children, their business and future, you know, whatever they want to be, we're there for them when they come out of the facility. And so that was a tremendous opportunity, and they got it. They totally got, you know, because they're coming from all over the state. So Jenny's talking not just about what Timberland could do, but all the other public libraries and what they can do in the state of Washington for, for the women in that facility.
They do have things up there where they can go online and stuff on occasion.
I'm not aware. I don't know to what extent they can.
Yeah. Do you still give memberships to them, or?
No, but I give them the application so when they get out, they can immediately.
Yeah. And then just briefly, I wanted to share with you that we're still continuing our pilot program, which is free right now, from a company called Mergent Intellect. This is the business database that we got. This is like typically $30,000, $40,000 a subscription for one year. We were able to get it for free for a six-month trial from June of this year to December 31st of this year. So this is based on Dunham Bradstreet and Hoover references. This has international information and obviously local information about businesses and demographics and so on, so I encourage you to take a look at Mergent Intellect. We want the public's feedback, because we need to make a decision between either going with that or another, their, their competition next year, because we can't afford to have both. So.
That's, that's essential, too, in that.
Yes.
It's so hard to get really good market research and market information regarding somebody even wants to start a business.
Yes.
That would dovetail beautifully with, um, the county received a Community Development Block grant for entrepreneurship and.
Yes.
And microenterprises, startups, and so what a great marriage.
It is. It is a great marriage. And so we, we are seeking everybody's feedback, because we have to make that decision fairly soon.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cheryl. For coming out.
And I'll see you in early 2017.
Okay, thank you. Next up is, I'm going to ask Dave Wyndham if he'd like to come introduce a brand-new member to the staff of Mason County. Dave Wyndham's our Community Services Director.
Good morning. So it's my, my pleasure and privilege to introduce Christopher Nelson, who is our new Planning Assistant Center Manager. So he's been looking at the PAC with permits and building permits and billing inspectors and working on the customer service and the things, streamlining and working through the processes. Christopher.
Welcome, Christopher.
Good morning.
And just tell us a little bit about yourself and what you hope to do, your, your goals for this position.
I'm excited to be back here serving Mason County. I've been serving workforce development, both in Kitsap and Jefferson County for the last few years, and I'm really excited to get on board with the permit center and help streamline processes. And hopefully, I'll have my business card shortly. Just ordered those yesterday. Be in day three now, so I'm open, open-door policy. If you want to come see me over in Building 8.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. We look forward to, at the very least, some online permitting options coming soon to a permit center near you. Um, next, is there any more organizational business to come before the commission? Thank you. That takes us to item number five. This is our Open Forum for Citizen Input, an opportunity to address the commission on any items not on the agenda. Anybody in the audience like to address the commission? Please raise your hand. Mr. Andruski. Small community when you can say the name of the person.
Yeah. First of all, I wanted to tail on to the library.
Could you just state your name for the reference?
Oh, Stephen Andruski, 538 Terraceview Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to tail on to the library. I want you to know that when we moved here 11 years ago, that was the first stop we made, was to get our library card, and I, and we value our library, so I just wanted to note that. On another note, Oyster Fest is coming, so it's time to put out the word. It's October 1st and 2nd. Schuclum and Shelton Rotarians are working together this year to put this wonderful event on. If anybody doesn't know, every nonprofit that would like to participate is coming and setting up a booth and selling some foods to the community to raise funds for their nonprofit, which is fantastic. I want to note also that basically, every nickel that's raised at Oyster Fest is going back to the community. The clubs do not receive income from that event. Basically, every nickel goes to, as we know, we have scholarships and all types of needs in the community that we are able to meet through this organ, through this event. So, hope all of you will come, hope you have fun, and we look forward to October 1st and 2nd. Thank you.
I'll be there.
I'll be there. I'll be, I'll be coming. But it's funny, people don't realize, I get, of all the questions that I get asked as a commissioner, that is the number-one question.
Yep.
Is, when is Oyster Fest? That's what everybody asks as a commissioner, and they want to know when Oyster Fest is.
Please be there. I know you will be.
I'll be there, working all weekend long. Thank you, and I understand Babe in the Blue, uh, the Blue Ox and.
They'll be there.
Paul Bunyan will be there.
Yes.
That's wonderful that they're going to be there. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Hearing none, we will move on to item number six, the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the September 12, 2016 briefing minutes.
And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 12, September 12 briefing minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Now we come to our action agenda. We have 13 items on our action agenda. Have you noticed how it gets longer towards the end of the year?
Yeah.
So we will read through each of these items. The intention is to approve them all in one vote. However, there's an opportunity for anybody in the audience or the commission to ask any questions after they've been read about any of these items. You also have the opportunity to ask that any of these items be pulled for a separate vote and testimony from the public. So Commissioner Netherland, I'm going to ask if you would read the first six items, 8.1 through 8.6, and then I would finish the list.
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. First of all, I apologize, this doubles, I, you know, it's funny, I go through this and every other week or so.
Allergies?
No, I, I keep thinking, I must have hugged somebody with a cat or whatever, but I just realized today, it's the doggone jacket that I'm wearing right now. I must have hugged somebody with a cat and it sticks with me, because I haven't worn this jacket, and all of a sudden, I walk in the room, I'm like, what the heck? What'd they get me? It's this. I realize it, so, my apologies, everybody. I'll take it to the cleaners.
I was going to say.
Okay, Madam Chair, item number 8.1 reads, approval for the chair to sign the County Road Administration Board Rural Arterial Program, the Rap Final Prospectus, and all other pertinent documents for a county road culvert replacement project on North Island Drive. Item number 8.2, approval of the board to authorize the following. Number one, Public Works and UNW management to advertise a request for proposals, RFP, to obtain a contract to provide grinder-pump maintenance services to single-family residential properties that connect to the North Bay Case Inlet and Belfair Sewer Systems, and authorize Public Works to interview, select, and execute the contract. Selection will be announced at a regular commission meeting. Item number 8.3, approval to jointly award the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in the amount of $30,000 to the Economic Development Council of Mason County, $20,000, and North Mason Chamber of Commerce, $10,000, providing community outreach and program education throughout the county. Item number 8.4, approval of the contract with the OSG Dozing LLC for the Mason County Recreation Area, MCRA, infield renovation field six and seven projects, to be funded in part through a grant from the State Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO. Item number 8.5, approval to adopt Mason County's social media policy, blogging policy, Facebook standards, and Twitter standards. Item number 8.6, approval to set a public hearing for October 11, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. to consider a code amendment for low-intensity mixed use in Shelton urban growth area.
Item 8.7, approval of the Veterans Assistance Fund applications for necessity items totaling $450, utilities totaling $848.18, and housing $650, for a total of $1,948.18, as recommended by the Veterans Service Office. 8.8, approval to allow signature authority to the Community Services Director for consolidated contract amendments for changes in contracts not exceeding $15,000. 8.9, approval for the board to sign a letter of support from Mason Transit Authority to the Washington State Department of Transportation to support MTA's funding efforts through the Public Transportation Consolidated Grant Program for the 2017 through 2019 biennium. 8.10, approval to set a public hearing for October 11, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. to consider rezoning two parcels from rural industrial to rural commercial. Five. Parcels are located adjacent to SR 119 west of Hootsport, parcels numbers 42210-34-90020 and 42210-34-90010. 8.11, approval to set a public hearing for October 11, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. to consider rezoning parcels 12233-50-0009 from rural industrial to rural commercial. Five. 8.12, approval to set a public hearing for October 11, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. to consider correcting a mapping error for a parcel mapped as long-term commercial forest that is designated as in-holding lands. That parcel number is 61936-11-00040. And then finally, our approval of our warrants. Item 8.13, our Claims Clearing Fund warrants numbers 8042416 through 8042917 for a total amount of $876,953.60. A direct deposit fund warrants numbers 34376 through 34770 totaling $625,038.79. Our salary clearing fund warrants number 7002156 through 7002196 totaling $895,322 even. Amazing. For a total of $2,397,314.39. Our totals to date for our Claims Clearing Fund that were spent is $23,000, $23,266,948.1 direct deposit year-to-date total, $9,456,200.16, and our salary clearing year-to-date is $10,100,728.55, the cost of running the county. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on any of the items just read? Ms. Hayward?
8.4.
You have a question?
Yes.
Okay. Please, could you, do you mind stepping to the podium? We had people that watch on Mason Web TV that says they can't hear.
So last episode, we talked about.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Cheryl Williams, 129 West Street. Last week, we heard from Mr. Winders about how he was, they were giving up the, the pursuance of the six and seven fields to be funded by them, and now I see that we have a grant from State Recreation and Conservation Office to fund that. Was that applied for before, or do they?
Do you want to keep that one?
They never had control over this project. What they did is they worked together and they had made an agreement as a group that they were going to come up with a certain amount of funds to offset the, the matching funds that are necessary, and they were never able to come up with the amount, I think it was 165,000, they were trying to. They came up with a person that would donate some gravel at a value of $40,000. We're still taking and doing that, that donation. They just stepped back because of their insurance issue on that, but we're still doing the donation, but, and that was according to the treasurer, but I got a phone call from other members that said that they hadn't had a meeting, so I don't know what, what they're doing. That's going to be up to them, but as far as us, it was never their project, it was always our project. They just were trying to come up with some matching funds to help make it work.
Okay, so we had this in the works long before last week.
Oh, yeah.
His announcement, so we're going, we're seeing our obligation through, and then whatever happens, happens in the future.
Yeah, there's a half a million dollar investment happening up there on, on those fields.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any questions on any of the items on the action agenda? Hearing none, is there anybody that would like any of the items removed for a separate vote? And I would, Commissioner?
No, I don't. Go ahead.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the action agenda as presented.
And I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? October 11th will be a very busy day. We have quite a few land use hearings, and so I do encourage people to take a look at what's being considered and to come testify if they have any thoughts on that. I want to thank our Public Works Department and our Director, Jerry House, for your diligence on trying to solve tremendous problems we have with staffing at our utilities, and one of them is an example of going ahead and contracting out some of the services, and I suspect more are coming our way. So I thank everybody. All of this, all of these items are briefed on our Monday briefings before they make it onto our agenda, and there's, represents a lot of work, and so we just quickly vote yes on, or vote on these, and I just wanted to make a point of making sure people know that there's a lot of work that goes behind this. So I will go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. We are five minutes away from our hearing, so I'm going to invite up our Parks, Trails, and Facilities Manager, Jeff Vrabel, who has a press release that is related to both your question and one of our items that we just approved.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Vrabel, the Facilities, Parks, and Trails Manager for Mason County. The press release this morning is in regards to the Mason County Recreation Area, Field Six and Seven. It reads such, "The renovation of the two fields at Mason County Recreation Area will begin September 21, 2016, and be completed no later than December 31, 2016, with the goal of completing the project before Thanksgiving. MCRA is a county-owned 30-acre baseball softball complex. The complex is used by multiple youth in baseball and softball leagues, the Shelton School District, and we have various tournaments that are scheduled throughout the summer. This project will replace the existing infills on Fields Six and Seven with synthetic surfacing." Excuse me. "This project will improve field playability, reduce maintenance, and reduce rainouts. Fields Two and Three were converted to synthetic turf infills in 2012 with great success. The outfield will remain natural turf. This project also addresses ADA access issues with improvements to the pathways in the park by replacing existing crushed rock with asphalt. The total project cost is $575,000, and Mason County was awarded a Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, also known as RCO, Local Parks Program Grant for $285,000, making the county's match $290,000, which is funded from the county's real estate excise tax two, or REIT two. Mason County Friends of the Parks work to provide in-kind donations to help meet the county's share, but for various reasons, that effort had limited success. Mason County will fund the entire match requirement. The construction contract was procured through the National Joint Powers Alliance, also known as the NJPA, which is a nationwide purchasing co-op used by all types of government entities and agencies, and as a member, Mason County is able to procure a variety of goods and services. The NJPA awarded the MCRA infield renovations for Field Six and Seven to OSG Dozing LLC, who also completed the renovations of Fields Two and Three. Mason County recognizes the importance of parks and trails in our community. The MCRA has become an important economic asset, drawing out of town competitors and their families who shop, dine, and stay at our local businesses. We are excited to complete this important project."
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
It does take us to 9:30, in which we have a public hearing. We have a public hearing to, to consider the contract award to, for Dropbox haul services. Melissa McFadden, introduce this item.
Good morning, Commissioner. Melissa McFadden, Mason County Public Works. Per RCW 3658-090, we're required to have a public hearing as part of this vendor selection process, and so it's sort of a, sort of an interesting, different process for solid waste handling systems. So that's why we're, we're going through a hearing ordinarily for a vendor for a Public Works, um, yeah, selection process. We would do it outside of the hearing process, but here we are. So, I want to share with you, our current contract was originally signed in 2002, has been extended a number of times. We had a long advertisement period, so we just did an extension in June to get us through the end of September so that we could get this contract negotiated. When we advertised, we received two proposals. I shared those with the board in August. I brought them to you to, to have a look at. We scored the proposals using three people in our Public Works, three of our staff members. We had a scoring sheet, scoring criteria. The criteria that weighed the most heavily were cost of the services, compatibility of the company's equipment and operations with our facilities, and relevance of similar work that's being performed by the company. So those were the three heaviest criteria, but there were something like seven or eight criteria that we used. In every single category that we scored on, and at a lower cost, Mason County Garbage scored higher than the other company that submitted. I will note that there are going to be some slight increases in prices for the work that their, Mason County Garbage is currently performing, so, for instance, at Belfair, when they haul a Dropbox for us, their cost has increased by about 5% under this proposal. So, I would hereby recommend that the board authorize Public Works to go ahead and enter into a service agreement with Mason County Garbage for a collection and hauling of solid waste drop boxes from Belfair, Hootsport, and Union to our main transfer station at Eels Hill Road.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience on, to Melissa, on this, this proposal?
What's the expiration date?
Uh, so, we haven't drafted the contract yet, but ordinarily, we draft them to be a one- or two-year contract with the option to extend by one- or two-year periods. Of course, extending from, back in 2002 is probably getting a bit outside of the realm of, of what's reasonable, so I would assume that we would allow ourselves one or two of, of what's reasonable, so I would assume that we would allow ourselves one or two extension periods and then go back out, go through another request or proposal process.
Any other questions? Thank you, Melissa. So we will open up this public hearing to testimony. Is there anybody who would like to testify? During that, I will close public testimony, and we'll move to Commissioner deliberation.
I'll make a comment on it, though. You know, over the years, this was a controversial issue for the county. In the past, there was lawsuits and, and stuff on that particular issue for extensions. I know myself, as a citizen back then, I was not happy with the extensions, because to me, an extension is only if you don't change the price or the dynamics of the actual agreement that you have. But in the past, they had, and that all, that's why it all went to court and everything like that. Then they were found that the people that took it to court didn't have standing. First, they won, and then they lost because they didn't have standing, not because the case is wrong. As Commissioners, we demanded that if it was going to be extended, that it just stays exactly the same, and that's what had happened for the last few years for the extension. Our staff was very diligent about that, and they went out and did everything they should do, and then I'm very happy with what they came back with, and I think they did a wonderful job. And the public should be very happy, because it was very open, very professionally done. There's, can't be any questions about, and selected. There was quite a difference between them.
Mason County Garbage serves this community so well, and we have a manager there here in the audience, and we just appreciate Mr. Fredrickson and your, your business, and I would support the recommendation of, of the Public Works Department on this particular contract.
I do want to note, the issue that the public had was not with Mason County Garbage, it was with the Commissioner at the time. Mason County Garbage, again, we all, we've done a fantastic job, at least for my house here.
I get my garbage picked up.
Yeah.
But it's true that, you know, the Dropbox contract is, is a very, I think, an important convenience for our community, that we do have these drop boxes throughout the community, and, but what it means is we have to have somebody haul them in every once in a while, and it's, it is a cost, and some, we had a short discussion about, about our, our Dropbox stations, and some of them truly are subsidized by the rest of the wait payers throughout the community for this convenience, and, and it's due to some of these costs, but it is, it is something that I, I hope people appreciate, the convenience of having this many options for them to self-haul their garbage.
Madam Chair, I, I move the board authorize Public Works, UNW management, to award the solid waste Dropbox haul service agreement to the Mason County Garbage Company Incorporated out of Shelton, Washington, for collection and hauling of solid waste drop boxes from Belfair, Hootsport, and Union stations to the main solid waste transfer station on Eels Hill Road.
And I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to authorize Public Works and Utilities and Waste Management to award the solid waste Dropbox haul service agreement to Mason County Garbage Company Incorporated out of Shelton, Washington, for collection and hauling of solid waste drop boxes from the Belfair, Hootsport, and Union stations to the main solid waste transfer station on Eels Hill Road. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. We look forward to doing, work with you as well.
One other comment on, on the side of this. If you haven't had a chance to go to one of their solid waste advisory committees, I know that doesn't sound like something you'd want to do. As a Commissioner, I went and was extremely surprised and happy with that particular group of people and how hard they worked, but more than that, how, how deep and insightful their discussions are. I had an issue with putting some of these people on that committee, because I thought it might be a conflict, but I got to tell you, Commissioner Jeffries pushed for that one at the time, because, you know, they had knowledge. It was one of the times where I could tell you I was wrong. I'm glad that she did push for that. I eventually did support it with her, and that's why it happened, but I got to tell you, I was, I was wrong, because they brought a lot to that discussion and opened my eyes and, as, as a citizen sitting in there, being able to ask some questions changed a lot of my own perceptions on it. So again, thank you for that as well.
Yeah, Sheriff Williams here in, in the audience is a member of the advisory committee, and I was surprised, actually, at how much interest there was to be on the advisory committee. And, no, it's not, it's not very, it's not the kind of work that people normally would, would, would consider, but it's so important, because solid waste is a police power of the, of the county given by the state, and it's, it's very important that we do things correctly, because obviously, solid waste is an issue that has public health implications as well as just the quality of a community.
And financial.
And financial.
Yeah, they're, they're helping us quite a bit with the financial aspect of it. There's, there's a financial arm to this, never forget.
Well, thank you. That takes us to item number 10, but Commissioner, would you mind if I move to item number 11? We have an elected official here in the audience, and I just hate to have them wait, in case they want to address the public. So this is, we'll move to item number 11. This is other business, any department heads, or we have elected official here, like to address the public on any items? Please. Sheriff Salisbury, thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Chief Howgan died, and Tom was, Tom died over the weekend of a heart attack. He is my chief for nine years and my great friend for over thirty. I have family authorization, permission to make this announcement today. I had to, was asked to call the other sheriffs first. I was able to contact Sheriff Shepard and Sheriff Wybark. So please remember Tom. It's, the last number of years, Tom advocated every day for his staff, and I talked to him about a week and a half ago. He kept saying, "Boss, please give that shale enough people, and please pay them what they're worth, and they'll stay. Please get me enough people over there." We're working on that. We're not there yet, but we're working on it. As many of you know, Tom just retired a few months ago, and a very short retirement, and we're deeply, deeply of office for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may we take a moment of silence for a fallen hero? Again, it was not in the line of duty, but I got to tell you, his, his commitment to this community lasted a long time, and he deserves a moment of good thought.
Over thirty years' service to Mason County, and robbed of a, of a long retirement. Supremely unfair, but we don't question. So let's take a moment of silence and remember Mr. Chief Howgan and his family. Any other elected department heads that would like to present? Thank you.
Good morning, again. As of eight o'clock this morning, we decided to lift the burn van, and that's in conjunction with DNR. So the announcements are going out this morning to news media and to other county offices. So I have news releases for media that are, that are here.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Director House, did you have anything you wanted to share with the Commissioner and the public? Okay. And we'll go on to item number 10. This is the Board of Reports and Calendars. This is an opportunity for us to share with the public any, where we've been, how we've represented the, on, represented the county on different commissions throughout the state, and then where we may be at the same meeting at the same time. Commissioner, another one?
Okay, Madam Chair, over this last week, some of the things I attended, Hood Canal Corning Council, I did attend a meeting of the Democrat Party, Chamber Beautification, Courthouse Security. I toured, toured the building as well to look at some of the options that they're having with trying to get access. We're, we're very lucky to have Kelly on our, on our crew and on our staff. He's a very, very intelligent man, a hard worker, but more than that, he thinks outside the box. He's going to help take care of some of those problems, and we bring it to us in the future.
In our courthouse?
In our courthouse. The ingress and egress of it is pretty hard to, to get around. It's a very old, old building. You have a door downstairs that's right off of a courthouse now that's not supposed to be accessed, but yet, because it's right off of the courthouse, and some of the people that are going into that courthouse, sitting outside, they can't help themselves but to push the, the button and go out the door, so they've ended up turning off an alarm, and that's bad, too, so they got to worry that somebody's, can allow somebody in from the backside, and, but there's some things that are going to be done to take care of all that. But then, even when there was an incident in the hallway, being able to shepherd people out became a hard thing because of another door that's locked up, and, and then a key situation. So there's some stuff that Kelly had all put on his plate, and we really appreciate him and all the work that he does. We had a regathering of the West Sound Alliance to put back, the band back together again for this, this year of working with the legislature to not just make sure that our monies stay in place, but also to prepare, because there is a belief that eight years into this, there'll be some more funding available than people realize, because more taxes are coming in than they had originally thought, and...
We're talking about water quality for salmon restoration?
No, we're talking, for West Sound Alliance, we're talking about for transportation.
Oh, West Sound Alliance, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. We have a lot of them, I know. And with that, there may be some opportunities, so we need to look at that, and, had it explained, though, because we're worried about money being shifted, we definitely need to move forward on some of our other projects that may connect to it, to solidify and make sure money doesn't move, because we're already in the process of working around their, their proposals. I had Lakeland Village End of Year Picnic, PRTPO, the Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization Meeting. We had our briefing, then we had our State Auditor Conference as we're going out. This next week, right after this meeting, I have to shoot down to Olympia for a, basically a legislative gathering and hearing on the Growth Management Act on behalf of the Association of Counties. I'll try to be back in time for our employee appreciation awards for those that have served the many, many years here. Diane is getting one for, what is it, twenty-five years now?
Twenty-five years. No, fifty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, Diane's on.
Yeah, she is our oracle. She knows everything. And then I'll be back, back over, we have our Mason Transit Authority Board Meeting. We'll be here tomorrow together for the 2017 Budget Workshop. I will be attending an opiate forum, and I think you'll be attending that as well. EDC Business Retention and, and Recruitment Meeting, North Mason Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting. EDC has their luncheon coming up, and then I also will have another meeting with EDC for membership. I'm going to be attending something, believe it or not, folks, with my short hair, I am an old hippie, and they are having something in Shelton I can't miss. It's called Return of the Tie-Dye. So I'm going to go, and I'm going to see that and be a part of that, just for a moment. Casper's having their annual slice for life, brings us back to our briefings, and then we'll have another budget meeting, and then I'll be meeting with i Fiber One, and then we have a Board of Health meeting. And that's, brings us back to our Tuesday evening meeting, and away we go.
Away we go. So last week, after our commission meeting, I had a meeting of the MaceCom Governing and Legislative Board. I, on Wednesday, the fourteenth, I represented the county at the Olympic Region Air Quality Control Board Organization. Something significant that we voted on after a public hearing was a procedure that allows the ORCA Board to be the regulatory authority in lieu of the EPA, or for EPA. By adopting, by reference, a series of federal air quality standards, they became eligible to be the designated representative and regulatory agency for EPA on air, on air quality. No funding, but it does make it easier for people looking for permits, in that they don't have to do it in two different organizations. They just have to go through the, just through the ORCA, and EPA now will be, will be requesting that designation from EPA. So that was pretty significant. Well, it is.
No, it is.
In a nerdy sort of way.
When you need to go through it, it's, it is for them.
Absolutely.
It streamlines that process, yeah.
I met with our legal counsel here at the county regarding a number of issues, and asked him to look into, and he'll be reporting back on, on them to the board. And then, let's see, had some pre-agenda meeting with the Mason Transit Authority. So he had a chance to, opportunity to tour the, the homes that were purchased with legislative and county money that would serve homeless veterans as both a shelter and permanent supportive housing, probably for families. And then they will be contracting with Catholic Community Services to, who will provide the referrals to the homes, and so I will be meeting with that director to try to marry some of the, some of the initiatives we have here, using county monies that serve veterans with the housing, because Homes First's whole philosophy is that you can't get some of the social issues taken care of until, unless somebody's housed. And we're trying to, we have monies coming from other areas, such as our, our mental health tax, that are targeted towards veterans, so I won't, I'm hoping that we can use that collective impact approach of having the housing support some of our other health efforts for veterans. And so we just want to make sure there's a seamless connection there. I met with a constituent who has asked for a code change, which I've talked to staff about, and you're aware of as well. We had our commission briefings yesterday, all day long, it was quite, but it was very productive. Following this meeting, I'll be meeting with some staff regarding consideration of whether or not the county wants to be the lead applicant and recipient of the Consolidated Housing Grant. There's a lot of requirements involved in that, and there's some fear that those, the current recipient isn't, you know, could lose some monies in that grant if they're not more diligent about doing that. And I think the, the county may have a role there, but we'll see. The Employee Service Awards are this afternoon, which are very, very important, I think, to just acknowledge the longevity of ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years of service to the county. We have the Mason Transit Authority Board Meeting this afternoon, and then I'll be at the Schuham Rotary, Shelton Rotary's Teachers Banquet, New Teacher Banquet, which is a, a welcome to the community, to new teachers in the, in the area. We have a Criminal Justice Working Team Meeting, first thing in the morning. Budget Workshop's starting, we're going to be starting with Superior Court, Coroner, one of the department, I can't remember now. I have a meeting of the Hood Canal Corning Council Environmental Award Selection Process, and then tomorrow evening is the Opiate Community Forum, and this is an opportunity to kind of extend on, and it's a nice complement of what Cheryl Hayward said, where the, what can the community do to address the opiate epidemic? And there will be very distinct opportunities to discuss the community's role in, in separate tables, and so I invite people, starting at four o'clock at the Shelton High School Cafeteria, I believe is where it will be, at four o'clock, and it goes till seven. And then I'm off to Moses Lake for the Transportation Improvement Board Quarterly Meetings, and then we're back here for the Commissioner Briefings on Monday, and then the Mason Transit Authority's Audit Exit Interview. Budget Workshops again on Tuesday morning, the twenty-seventh, our Board of Health Meeting, and then our Commission Meeting. I will be attending the North Mason Voice Meeting on the twenty-sixth, for the world to know. So if you are there, we'll both be there at the same time, potentially. And just, just to let folks know also, I'll be at the North Mason Chambers Candidate Forum on the twenty-ninth, which you'll be there as well, after I'm set up Oyster Fest. Okay. Is there anything else to come before the Board? Any other discussion items? Oh, I did want to ask you. Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization was asked on Friday to consider a request for some additional funding for a trails project, I believe it was, here in Mason County. What was the outcome of that meeting?
For the most part, there's, so people know, there's a little bit extra money, I think it's fifty-two thousand dollars, that had not been allocated out, because the project didn't go through or, or the like. What they did is they came up with several different options. One of them was to buy some software for transit, which I still don't understand why we would use planning money for software for transit, but that, that's one of them. Another is for these, these trails, and to be able to, they, they gave different options. One of them was to do a website to show where some trails are, another, which I still, again, don't think that's planning money, but another was to actually find where all of our, our trails are, map them, and find all the gaps between them, so that we can go after funding to get them. And then a third option for the money is to look at all of our intersections, the ones that are not covered on the state, federal stuff, and see if we can come up with a map of some of the, the traffic issues that may occur, there are accidents and the like. What they did is they decided to take those three, they had a few other ones, but they, they died those three, and they'll get more information, bring them back for the next meeting, and the decision will be made at the next meeting. I, myself, am heavily, and not because of...
I'm sorry, so what is the process now?
They're going to go back, get some more information on...
On each of those proposals?
Yeah, on each of those, because...
And who's they, the, the staff?
The staff, yes, and bring it back for the decision for the Board.
And when will that occur?
I think it's next month, I think it is. But I, myself, am heavily for the one on the trail, but not because we were asking any of that, but because that's one of the only ones that actually had to do with planning for transportation, because trails are transportation, multi-modal transportation, there's different things, there's other, all kinds of trails. There's trails for vehicles, trails for off-road vehicles, trails for horses, trails for people, trails for motorcycle, trails for everything. Being able to find the gaps that we have, so we can work together to... Being able to find the gaps that we have, so we can work together to create connections through that organization made the most sense to me, and so that's what I ended up supporting and asking for. With the idea that if they could actually show some proof that we can get some kind of benefit out of mapping those intersections, that I'd be interested in looking at that as well, but you're talking about something so huge that $52,000, it'd be hard to see how that would even accomplish anything. Imagine corners in, you know, three different counties and jurisdictions and stuff.
So this would be potentially, but this, this other option would potentially be a benefit to the community, in that we are served by state highways right through our urban growth areas.
Yes.
And, and we do struggle getting adequate pedestrian safety. Is that, is that what the consideration is, or traffic?
Nope, on that, on that, no, it's traffic flow, but mostly it's accidents, so that they can go for funding later. But the thing is, is you may be able to pick five places in your community, and, and you may not even be able to, with $52,000, you may not even be able to do an accurate study that'll have any benefit to go after funding for that, with a little bit of money that we're talking about. Because anytime you do any type of, of transportation issue, like I was talking about, accidents and traffic flow, and even they said they can get traffic incident numbers, but what they really need is to find some way to capture the angst that you have going through intersection. Because in some of them, that's where the real issue is. How do you prove that? How do you show that?
Stresmometers in your car.
Yeah, to do that with $52,000, $53,000, I, I just don't see that as realistic. But we gave them the opportunity to go back and see what they can put together, the ones that we're pushing for that, and, and bring forward. If they put something together that everybody benefits, I'm open-minded to it.
Okay.
I'm a little harder on the transit one, because I don't think it should be the Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization's duty to help them find a better way to service their customers through marketing or, or, you know, because it puts it on the internet and stuff like that. I just don't see that as planning dollars, and, and I'd like to keep that separated. I understand that transit's important, we both serve on the transit board, but it can't be everything and, and serve all the money. So that's my personal opinion on that.
Okay, well, I appreciate your advocacy there. I, I agree that we do need to work on connecting the Olympic Discovery Trail to a trail system through Kitsap County and Mason County, and just complete, a complete loop of trails on the Olympic Peninsula, because the sad truth is, I don't see the U.S. Forest Service anytime soon getting a little bit more liberal with their ability to, or their allowing of harvesting more in, on the Olympic Peninsula. Unfortunately, the rest of the United States doesn't understand how important that timber activity is for local governments up here, because frankly, in Texas and some of these other areas, they don't have timber. And so, so we're losing more and more opportunity to, to have that be one of our economic drivers on the peninsula. So what is the answer? It's not the end-all, be-all, but tourism is, is a big one, and these trail systems help that immensely, because people want to get out of Puget Sound area, get on their bike, and run through the Olympic Peninsula and live, or play where we live. And so that is transportation to some extent, but it's also a good economic driver.
And it sounds huge, but the truth of the matter is, a lot of these are already, already in existence. We have plans that have this, 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 and this. What this would do would be to accumulate all of them together, and then find the gaps so that we can go after funding for those gaps, so.
Okay.
I needed to ask you, Madam Chair, about MaceCom. We had that issue before in regards to the phone.
Thank you, yes. So, MaceCom, MaceCom changed their phone system, and as a result, there was a, there was kind of one of those clunky connections from the Belfair area, because it's long distance from Belfair on regular landlines to the Shelton area, and we've always tried to struggle around that and work around that, barring having the phone company just say this, you're in that service area. So we've had toll-free numbers for people from many different county services, in, for people up in the Belfair area as well as Hootsport. And, and so the non-emergency line to your 911 dispatch kind of went through the county system, so it could maintain itself as a, as a toll-free long-distance call. Unfortunately, when they did some retrofits of their phone system, it knocked that whole system out. And then, or that line out, and so then their fix ended up taking all of the phone lines down. And so they're still working on it diligently, and they haven't forgotten it, but like I said, their initial fix just ended up breaking the whole system, and, and I, and I wish I could be more specific about how it broke.
Actually, you did a really good job of explaining it, because that was the best explanation of why this occurred. I understand that, I can explain that to the community when they call me.
And they're working on it, they are working on it very, very hard, and unfortunately, the first work didn't, made it worse, and so now they're just trying to continue on to solve that problem. Anything else to go before the board?
Madam Chair, I move for adjournment.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here.